We need to support the mayor on the floor, wait.
Thank you, Lord, for this day. We thank you for the blessings of life you've given us, and thank you for the health and means and freedoms you give us, Lord. And we thank you for our community. Father, we pray that you just help us to make decisions for our community in a way that be pleasing unto you, Lord. And I thank you for each one that's here tonight, and they're good friends, and I just pray that you just bless them, and it's help us to come together and be the group of men and women, Lord, that you have us to be. May we honor you and always say you do in Christ's name, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, made a motion to call the meeting to order.
Someone?
Don, second. All in favor? Item two, motion and second, cover all what's on the agenda.
Motion.
Kevin?
Second.
Don? All in favor? Item number three, reading of the minutes, December 19th and 19th, and January 13th, 20.
Okay, bear with me, it'll take me a few minutes. Hackleburg Town Council met in regular session on December 19, 2019, at 6:30 PM. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Wigginton made a motion and was seconded by councilmember Lawler. Councilmember Don Lawler led everybody in prayer, and the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Coburn stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by councilmember Lawler and seconded by councilmember Kevin Borner to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the November 18, 2019, special meeting. After reviewing, a motion was made by councilmember Don Lawler and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: five As and one abstain. A financial statement was given to the mayor and council by the clerk to review. A motion was made by councilmember Don Lawler and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The clerk presented a register for the council to look over and to approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by councilmember Lawler and seconded by councilmember Kevin Borner to pay all bills when due. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. In on business, the mayor and council discussed hiring Trevor Hardy of Next Generation Computers as IT technician, excuse me, for the town. The clerk has not received any other bid for this job. Mr. Wayne Mays, who was in attendance, stated that he had sent one to the mayor. Mayor Coburn looked on his phone at the time and did find a bid. Councilmember Lawler made a motion to table this until another meeting and was seconded by councilmember Kevin Borner. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. Moving on to new business, the mayor and the mayor stated that Chief Jeremy Marvin had given him his resignation from the Hackleburg Police Department effective immediately. A motion was made by councilmember Don Borner and seconded by councilmember Lawler to accept Chief Marvin's resignation. Mayor Coburn wanted to commend Jeremy for his dedication to his job here at the town of Hackleburg in which he will open his new job. Voting was as follows: five As and one abstain. The mayor and council discussed the job opening for the chief of police. With Officer Jonathan Oates being assistant chief at this time, he will step into the role of acting chief until a hire is made. The mayor gave three options for a hire: contract, hire within, or post the job. Requirements include having served as a police officer for five years, experience in a supervisor role, 24/7 on-call, and no second job. The mayor also mentioned that former police chief Kenny Hallmark would be interested in working under a contract. Being retired, he can't make over $32,500 per year, so it would save the town $12,300 by going with the contract. Councilmember Lawler stated that we need to promote from within, and that Jonathan Oates should have a chance to be promoted. Councilmember Don Borner wants to sit down with Jonathan and talk about what would be expected of him and get his ideas. Officer Oates was given an opportunity to speak. He stated that he went to Trumper School in the 90s and worked in Mississippi before he moved to Hackleburg and was hired as a police officer in 2005. He is familiar with all the duties and has taken over scheduling and time parts. A motion was made by councilmember Lawler and was seconded by councilmember Marvin to promote Jonathan Oates to Hackleburg Police Chief with a 90-day probationary period, also to post the job for an assistant chief. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor discussed the ADECA grant with the council. The town has been guaranteed $250,000 from Aldad, $85,000 from ADECA, $30,000 from Marion County Commission, and we will add $72,000 of our own funds. And this will be for paving. Mayor Coburn wanted to discuss the road paving and which roads would be first. Union Hill Cemetery Road would be first on the list. This is the road that the Marion County Commission will pay $30,000 of cost to. Mayor Coburn discussed the purchase of Lamar County Gas by Northwest Alabama Gas with the council. This will add 1,400 customers in Vernon, Millport, and Kennedy, and a potential to expand even further. The mayor and council discussed repayment of bank fees to People's Trust from the work on Hackleburg Market. Town attorney Tony Glenn suggests we pay them even though we have no contractual obligation. It would be in good faith and good reason. The attorney for the bank, Justin Little, was offered $5,000 by our attorney, but he was turned down. Councilmember Lawler wanted to see an invoice with the full amount and a breakdown. Councilmember Kevin Borner was in favor of paying, but Don Borner said he was not. Councilmember Marvin made a motion to give Darrell approval to get a copy of the invoice and to pay it. Councilmember Wigginton seconded the motion. Voting was as follows: all As, excepting one abstain. The mayor and council discussed occupational tax reserve set up, set for backup for Hackleburg Market. It was decided to leave the $10,000 set aside in this account from the original occupational tax fund as is. Also, keep the one-half cent from the school tax going into a new account, the grocery tax fund, and put the $18,000 from the Commercial Development Authority into the general fund. Neighbor Day was discussed. The mayor and council looked at dates. Also discussed combining Neighbor Day on the 4th of July. It was decided to table until January. The mayor and council discussed the loan payment on the fire department building. The question had been raised, could the fire department pay the loan payment to First National Bank with the three mill funds? As for town attorney Tony Glenn, the answer is no. For code ALN-HVF, the money could be used to buy a building or to build one. Councilmember Lawler asked if he could charge, if we could charge the fire department rent on the building. Mayor Coburn stated that he would talk to Fire Chief Steve Hood. Chad Hudson, street department employee, was in attendance to discuss the street job. Chad gave an update on jobs being done at his time. He stated that several culverts were needing to be replaced and street signs being torn down. He also stated that he was happy with working, the working arrangement at the time, with him being the only full-time employee while working two part-time employees. Councilmember Marvin stated that he appreciates all the hard work that Chad does and commended him. All ran agreement. Passed the 2020 budget was next on the agenda. All seemed to be in agreement, in agreement with the budget as it was presented, except for a few, a few changes that came up this, in this meeting. It was, we were to add $85,000 for the ADECA grant money, $18,000 for the transfer of the Community Development Authority, also show $72,000 in expenses for our share of paving, and $2,000 for Chad's raise, and $18,000 for the payment to Marion County Commission for expenditures. A motion was made by councilmember Lawler to accept the 2020 budget with these changes, and was seconded by councilmember Wigginton. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The Alabama First Responders Benefit Program was discussed. This is a cancer benefit for certified volunteer firefighters. We have six total for the Hackleburg Fire Department. A motion was made by councilmember Marvin and seconded by councilmember Lawler to table until the next meeting, so town attorney Tony Glenn will have time to review this. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor and council discussed giving Chad Hudson a raise. The mayor proposed giving Chad a $1 per hour raise effective January 1, 2020, and making him supervisor over his department. A motion was made by councilmember Marvin and seconded by councilmember Don Borner to agree on the mayor's proposal. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a breakdown of the power bills for the radio station slash rec center. It was discussed that Huddy Hutchinson has spent several thousand dollars on repairs on the building, and that he has not been billed for his power usage. The amount of power owed to the town is $2,300. The mayor stated that he thought that the power should be a flat rate and billed with the rent. A motion was made by councilmember Marvin and seconded by councilmember Lawler to amend the contract to charge Huddy a flat rate of $200 per month for his power bill along with $300 for rent, and reevaluate this in October of 2020. And also, I need to add in there that he was to be invoiced the $2,300 for the power in 2019.
Has he been invoiced?
Yes. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor and council discussed a bill from the Marion County Commission, AMA expenditures for 2020. Each city in the county are billed for this each year. A motion was made for councilmember Marvin and seconded by councilmember Don Borner to pay this, but to adjust the budget for it. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by councilmember Don Borner and seconded by councilmember Lawler to adjourn.
Any comments or questions on the minutes of December 19? As far as police officers, we've had one APoC certified certification. Several that would need to go through, do training. Who was that?
Was it David Critten? [00:00:54]
Yeah. The current working [00:00:57] Jonathan said Mark's county, but he lives in Bear Creek.
He was part-time here at one time.
Yeah, he's worked here, so.
And he quit part-time to go there full-time.
What's the IT contract? Have you ever figured out your final amount? Yes, we decided last meeting that Wayne was going to do it as, as needed.
Have we got just one application that's suitable to be hired?
We've only got one APoC certified. I mean, we've, we've got some that are suitable to be hired, but only one certified.
So the rest of them are Hackleburg students?
Well, yeah. I told Jonathan we'd go over all of them tomorrow.
Okay. Well, you know what I'm talking about, so we need to look at that kind of.
On the school tax money, we need to distribute that this week.
Yes, I've done, I've done that, ready to do.
On culverts, we have replaced a 60-inch, and we've done a lot of cleaning that, cleaned it out and ditched in, and we've got some more to, more to replace.
And we don't have some of them, it's raining.
About the time it dries up enough, it'll rain.
Do you want me to go ahead and read these others, or do you want to vote on the first set?
I think we need to finish questioning this before we move on. I still got a few more about this one.
Okay, I thought she knew he was talking about culverts. Which was on the other set?
Well, some of the ones use a straight. Yeah, I told you this. You're ready about it.
Maybe both of them, but.
See, they have stated several culverts may have been replaced and signed and been torn down.
I know the next one.
Yeah. What about them, boys? Do we ever get that from the bank? Uh, yes, we do have an invoice, and what they've agreed to do, what we've been doing, is paying them 2,500 a month, instead of just paying them like we can. Now, I'd rather copy that for the next, for the next meeting. Yeah, we'll get one. That's all we got on that.
That one's all right.
Seems like to me that Chad has took a more active role in dealing with the town, and involved, and trying to lead it, so I think he's done a pretty good job.
And our new chief, I, I keep hearing good stuff about him, too. I think he's doing real well with it.
Yeah, he's done a good job. Yeah, I'll have anything else on that one? Need a motion to accept the minutes of December 19. Yeah. Second. Don? All in favor? All right. You read the January 13?
Things can take a while. Now, I was in attendance. If I missed something, we can add it or whatever. The Hackleburg Town Council met in regular session on January 13, 2020, at 6:30 PM. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Lawler made a motion and was seconded by councilmember Wigginton. Councilmember Don Borner led everyone in prayer, and the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Coburn stated the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made for councilmember Lawler and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. A financial statement was given to the mayor and council by the clerk to review. A motion was made for councilmember Marvin and seconded by councilmember Lawler to accept as presented. Voting was, voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. In on business, the budget was listed to be passed in order for the mayor and council to review the new labor law concerning salaried employees. A motion was made to table to the next meeting by councilmember Lawler and seconded by councilmember Don Borner. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor and council welcomed the Oates family as part, the Oates family as it was time to swear Officer Oates in as chief of police of Hackleburg. Town attorney Tony Glenn stood before the council with Officer Oates, and his wife held the Bible. The oath was administered to the chief, to Chief Jonathan Oates, as his family looked on with the mayor and council. The mayor stated that Jonathan had been doing a good job and congratulated him. The mayor and council discussed sending Chief Oates to the 2020 Chiefs Conference in Montgomery February 17 through the 20th. Registration dues and lodging will approximately be $796. A motion was made to send the chief to the conference by councilmember Don Borner and was seconded by councilmember Wigginton. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor and council discussed hiring a full-time street employee. Mayor Coburn wanted to wait to hire someone in the spring when work picked back up, but councilmember Lawler wanted to go ahead and hire someone now. She stated that she had heard from a citizen that Chad wanted some help now, other than the part-time. A motion to post the job was made by councilmember Marvin and was seconded by councilmember Lawler. The voting was as follows: two As, three Nays. With the vote three to two against, the job will not be posted until spring. The mayor and council discussed how the rec center was being operated for personal and public use. It was decided back in September that the gym will be closed to the public from October through March because of the youth basketball league practices. Public use needs to be scheduled and to be on a Saturday or Sunday as the youth has practices Monday through Friday. Some young adults are getting in the back door and using the gym when it should be closed to the public. The door, the door needs to be replaced. Also, there are some older citizens that walk in the mornings when it's cold or it's too, when it's raining. This should be okay. The mayor asked if a schedule should, could be put on the door or post to social media. He stated that we need to accommodate all people. The mayor and council discussed purchasing culverts. A 60-inch on 118 intersection of 53 is old and busted, busting causing water to run over the road. This will be $1,800. Also, a 24-inch and 18 needed on 121 with cost of $750. Councilmember Marvin wanted to wait on purchasing these until we hire another full-time employee. A motion was made by councilmember Don Borner and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to go ahead with purchase, to purchase these. Voting was as follows, with three As and two Nays. So these will be purchased and be placed as soon as possible. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by councilmember Lawler and seconded by councilmember Marvin to.
I heard the reading of the minutes for January 13. Any questions or comments? We'd already gone over it, but we did get that big covert in. We'll try to get the two small ones in this week. Need a motion to.
Can I ask a question? On Mandy's notes, I didn't see anything where it was voted on for Wayne. Did we, did y'all do something, and I just missed it, or?
Somewhere, I know we agreed to use him on an as-needed basis to Wayne on the computer.
I thought we voted to give that to him, didn't we, or did we table it?
See, I wasn't here last meeting, so I didn't know. I was afraid I'd missed it.
What we doing there?
I thought we agreed to use him.
I didn't think, but it wasn't in the minutes, was she saying?
It didn't come up last meeting. It didn't come up last meeting.
Did it, no?
I know one meeting before, you know, we were talking about the Hardy guy, and Wayne stated that he had given you a, a bid. So at that point, his bid was less, I guess.
Can we add that to the agenda, Tony? On the December 13 meeting, we had a discussion with Wayne.
Yeah, we can add it.
Because it's in the minutes, right here. No business, thought by the technician and the clerk, and I don't see the bid, and Mr. Wayne Mays, who was in attendance, stated he'd sent the mayor on his phone a bid and did find a bid. He did find it at that meeting, which was December 18, according to this, and probably when that was discussed. Add that as number six on new business. I'll put just discuss the IT. From the December 18, make [inaudible]. Need a motion to accept the minutes of January 13. Second. Old business. Item number one, discuss Neighbor Day.
Would you pay bills?
Oh, my bad. I was writing on that line. Item number four, pay the bills. Can we skip that?
I have one check register, the ones that I have paid already, and then one payment preview is some that are, are ready to be paid.
Set Alabama Power two months worth.
Oh, no, that shouldn't be.
81, 51.
Oh, on that one.
On the check register.
If you'll notice on that also, Marion County Commission, that's $17,000. That was for
Is it always been on there for towns to pay the AMA and communications? I think it was wrote too.
Yeah, sometimes the printer messes up, so. Or we wrote for the wrong mail, or sometimes they got intertwined. You just, there's different things.
Two, I had them turn all the gas off except for one. Have it on one brick unless we know it's going to get cold, cold. They had them all on one brick.
Yeah.
Burning a lot down there. Bill was always high. Need a motion to pay the bills. There. Second. Yeah. All in favor? Now, old business. Item number one, discuss Neighbor Day. Now, old business, item number one, discuss Neighbor Day.
I've talked with several people and it's just sort of split. There are other cities that have things on both of those days. We used to have ours every year before Saturday in April and people weren't used to us having it then. I know we had several vendors, like the Ice Cream Man, he can come that weekend and he can't come the first weekend in May and then I've got some right off of it. So it's just gonna have to be, when you said it, it needs to be left that way. It really is better for people to plan.
Thought we was gonna provide them.
We didn't provide them at all and I asked several people about that. You'll not ever get to be, get vendors to come. They're, they're on vacation, most of them at that point. You think most of those that you know, that's what they told me?
Well, they're just shut down for summer, June, July, it's scary or to do anything.
Or if they're not, you got a lot more competition.
I mean, I, I think the people of the town enjoying Neighbor Day, they look forward to it. The weather's a bit unpredictable, but.
Yeah, but.
It shows life.
Yeah. So it's driving home tonight.
That's right.
Do it again like, I mean, the next year, so.
Well, we're happy, we just need to be on in and set a date. The last weekend in April, is that what you're saying?
It seems like to me that we would have more, but the first weekend in May, Coleman's got one and I think Fulton, there's several, some of the vendors go to them because they're big.
Nashville is the first weekend also, that's big, big for our vendors.
Well, the fourth weekend is, is Nashville?
First weekend.
I recommend with Sunday, what the date is?
April 25th is the Saturday, so we did Friday night and Saturday, and the 24th and 25th.
That good with all y'all?
Yep.
Yeah. All right. Set the date for April 24th and 25th, Friday night and Saturday.
That way I can start getting people for certain because I haven't been able to tell them.
Yeah. Let's go ahead and get a vote on that. You got a motion on setting that date?
Motion have it April 24th and 25th, Friday and Saturday.
Second.
Second.
Darren, all in favor? Item number two, discuss the Alabama First Responder Benefit Program. I think most towns are doing this. It's a, just a small cancer policy for the fire departments, volunteer fire departments. Prices in here somewhere.
And Tony, did you get a chance to look over first responders?
What'd you think? Good?
Of course, like I stated, in the minutes, we have six certified and that's all that we'd be, you know, that's all that we'd have to do.
Well, it's for all of them?
Is it for all of those certified?
Non-certified hours.
Non-certified as well.
Yeah.
I have a list of all of them, but I must have left it in the other folder.
The thing about this, you've got a lot on there, just like Chad said, we got about 30 to 50 on there and ain't but about 10 that ever shows up.
Well, Steve gave a updated roster from the fire department.
I'm saying there's about 20.
Yeah.
Eighteen, twenty. You looking roughly 2,000 for non-certified and about 800 for certified. Probably about 3,000 here.
Yeah.
Roughly.
I think it's a, it's a good thing to have them and show them, you know, that we appreciate what they do. It ain't a whole lot, but.
I don't have, one of them meet once a month.
Yeah, that's the, it's the main meeting.
I don't have a problem doing it because I think there needs to be a resolution attached to it, that they gotta attend at least half the meetings, they make six, which would be 12 qualified and at least be part of it for one year before.
If y'all wanna bring Steve, if y'all wanna have Steve come in at the next meeting and talk with him about it, I'm okay with it, but I like, I'd like to see us do it, but I may as well bring him in, just talk with him and see what.
And I mean, the ones that done, you know, the ones that done, I don't go ahead and gig it in, you know, but for future. I mean, if we got the money, ain't gonna problem with it because I don't get no other benefit out of it, and that's not mox, but.
No.
It shows them a little recognition and respect for what they're doing.
But with what Eugene said, it does get them concerned, that.
Yeah. They're the one that's been slacking, it might give them a nice to show up and get more in law, but.
We're all running away from the burning building, they're running into it, so.
They ain't paying tired of them.
No, not a thing there, but most of them are good, you know, we just need to figure out his active roster and, you know, get a, get a good count of them.
You gotta know, how long do we have on this?
I don't think we're limited to anytime real or soon.
And that is a per year.
Yeah.
The amount, so 150, 24 for non-certified, 138, 48 for certified, per year.
The law became effective January 21st.
Non-certified, I mean, 138 certified won't do. So that's just the, we'll look at the different things here and I'll add. Well, that's for the cancer and long-term disability. So that could be, if they got hurt, then there you go, they get paid too. And the disability that's in with it.
I'm all for it.
I said it's non-certified, I don't know, first time we've paid it.
I'm, I'm good with it. I'm kinda like Eugene, I'll maybe help Steve put a little, spark a little more. Might, might be a plus for him to put a little bit of stipulation to it that they need to show up and that would help him give.
I see.
His folks to want to come.
According to this, you can add long-term disability with the cancer for about $11 a year or more, and I would be for doing that because it's not $11 and they get, if they get hurt, they can, they've got a benefit there for a little more than it is. It's 198 for long-term disability and cancer on the certified and it's 150, 24 for non-certified. So it ain't but, I mean, $15 is the most difference. And that's the other two benefits, yeah. Give them a little bit of coverage, they got hurt, you know, and that benefit anymore.
It's basically a law, everybody's gonna have to do this, so.
So you could do a motion to do it if they attend six meetings out of the 12, couldn't you?
Yeah, just let Steve handle it from there, I'm sorry, because it's done on there.
I think it probably goes really beyond the meetings and into who's showing up to go to the actual incidents going on.
No, I'm talking about to the meetings, though.
Yeah.
If they're involved enough to come to six meetings, they gonna be available for most fires.
Just set some kind of criteria.
Yeah.
Then, and that probably be something good, he could advertise to get people to join. I mean, for real.
Yeah, that's a good benefit.
We could go ahead and pass it pending Steve come to the next meeting and update the roster and tell us, you know, give us his.
And work with him to draw up an amendment, though.
Make a motion.
Darren makes a motion and we pass it.
And a resolution, being number one, discuss it.
Pending Steve comes to the next meeting and updates rosters and.
How do they qualify?
Yeah. Who's qualified under.
Put in there for the cancer and the long-term disability, both of them.
Darren makes a motion that we adopt the first responder benefit program, the cancer and disability.
Yeah, long-term disability for certified and non-certified.
Get it sick.
Volunteer.
Second.
Do you get that, Carla?
Yes.
Okay. All right, item number one on new business, Jessica Pruitt, would like to discuss having a assignment sale with the RIC Center.
It's me again. Um, the dates that I'm looking at or asking for, they March 14th through April 18th. Um, I had her look at the calendar today and it was all clear. There was nothing on those days in between.
Okay, March 14th, three weeks.
March the 14th through April the 18th, the Saturday through Saturday. It would be the weekend, I would be out the weekend before Neighbor Day.
So that's like six weeks.
Five weeks, a little less than five weeks. Well, you gotta be right, five weeks, Saturday to Saturday.
I think we need to wait until families present and discuss that further because we had the issue, people want to play basketball and it couldn't cause the league, now she don't tie it up for six weeks to have a sale in it, so I don't know, I don't know where to go on that.
Yeah, we took, took quite a bit about the gym being closed to the public during RIC League.
We had the floors ready on there.
Yeah, but it seemed like it sucked coming up the last time, but I can't remember. Where, where are we at, like I was asking about replacing the doors?
I talked to him during the sale and he was supposed to, he said, I'll come out and get measurements and get you some prices and I really got busy with the holidays and didn't think about it. So after that slowed down, January, the first week in January, I called him and I said, hey, did I never get it? And he said, oh, I completely forgot, just slipped my mind and busy. So he said, and this was the first, this was the first Wednesday in January, he said, I'll, I'll get right on it, I'll get over there and get measurements. So that was like a few weeks ago, I guess, I talked to him. I also reached out to Wade Williams the same week, so I thought maybe if I tell him, I got somebody else looking. Um, I took pictures and measurements and sent them to Wade and Wade said he'll have me something this week on a couple of different options as far as doors go, the same type or something a little more nicer for y'all to look at to see, to, okay, whatever you want. It didn't matter to me.
Um, I know you're probably a little bit time-sensitive there, knowing if you can or not, but I feel like we probably need to discuss this a little bit with everything that went on during closing it to the public.
Okay.
Just to make sure that we're not getting into something we probably don't.
Maybe.
Tony may need to look into it a little bit.
Yeah.
Because to spare money, we can kinda get by with it mid-RIC League because we don't have any.
I mean, I wouldn't mind, I mean, I wouldn't mind, I heard y'all say earlier that money pays 300, 200 dollars per hour, but I wouldn't mind, I never, not offered, but I wouldn't mind to rent it. You know, as far as insurance go, I always had that covered through my business, that's not a question, it's a million dollars or some crazy number, but insurance, I always cover that and you guys are listed as second or whatever, whatever the legal terms are, but, um, I mean, I would, if that's an issue, I wouldn't mind renting it if that's, you know, if that's the case, because that's what I would have to do if I could get back to Hamilton, but I would like to keep it in Hackleburg, I think it did great.
Do we have any figures on previous sales tax off of these sales?
Um, I took in a little over 12,000, I think it was, she said, right at 900 maybe, a little less than a thousand dollars for the last sale. The previous sale, I didn't, she does all that and sends all that in, but I think, when I asked her, it was a little less than a thousand dollars.
I think it may be discussed myself before we get, talk for what? Darren brought up the last meeting and then like he said, still, we need to discuss it and learn to know something by the next meeting, that's two weeks.
We meet again on February 10th. Do you need to know something by then or can you wait?
Um, my website opens February 1st, I think, for registration. I usually try to have at, at least the dates, so I don't know, be what I need to do. If I can, great, if I can not, then.
I thought we'd wait.
I mean, I don't really make no decision before, so I was gonna say I'm out right now, we're out of the talks because the only way I'm doing it will be a full table discussion. I mean, if you know we've done it before, but still, fine.
You can wait till the 10th, we'll have you some kind of educated answer by then, but just some things that have happened, we need to make sure here, and not with you, but.
With the, you sort of, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
I mean, we agreed to rent our building in the past, but that was for party purposes, I don't know about for us.
Long-term.
Business, I mean, it ain't for five weeks, I don't know what the difference would be or whatever, but then again, you gonna have the issue with what we discussed the last meeting, we didn't do it, it's gonna be tied up for the next, they're right along with saying, and then we turn it loose for her for five weeks and it locks it up with that, there you go, you know, wish that none of the gun then, but.
Are you talking about five weeks total or you did like a week?
No, Saturday to Saturday.
Yeah, just making sure that she's on a five week. Tony, you.
Are you, are you still down here in this building?
I'm not open, I'm still using them, but I'm not open to public.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't know if, if one beside it, if you had access to it, if it wasn't big enough or.
No, it's not big enough. I've got a big oil changing pit in the middle of it that takes a.
Say, I didn't know, I knew that, I thought she was renting that one building, I didn't know what was going on with the other, but.
I just use it for storage, the big one.
Tony, I think you can probably help us out there just by looking at the legal, see if we're good on that.
Because the previous. Because the previous two, there was some donation involved with that one, other than just your profit for now, I was a Christmas sale she had in there, year before last.
And as far as the donation, this sale actually, the clothes that were left over went to the community, like the first sale, I had somebody come pick everything up, throw them off, but this one, I was allowed, I was able to open it for two days and everybody kind of came and what was donated, you know, they got jackets and pants.
From a community paper, lady stuff.
Yeah, everything that was left over went strictly to the community, it was it.
Right.
Nobody from off got to get it, it was community.
I mean, which I don't have no problem, but they did, they did, no matter where it's from, but
Okay.
That's not what they need to discuss, it's still.
Motion to table it to the tenth.
Yeah.
Eugene, second.
Second.
Kevin, all in favor? All right, item number two, reappoint Doc Hudson to the Wonder Lord for a four-year term.
Save a long bunch of talking motions, uh, reappoint Doc Hudson on board.
Second.
Very good member.
Second. Darren, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right, item number three, um, you all should have a resolution, copy of the resolution in your folder. This is a agreement pretty much between AlDOT and the town for the two hundred and fifty thousand that we, uh, were getting from them. Uh, in short, it's been resolved by the town of Hackleburg, as follows, that the town enter into an agreement with the state of Alabama acting by and through the Alabama Department of Transportation relating to a project for resurfacing, and then it knows what roads it, we could possibly do.
Well, that's just a suggestion of the road, that's not.
We still have to have.
We have to enter into this resolution, so I'm gonna make the motion to enter into this resolution.
Yeah, we have to have it in order to.
Well, I'd like to ask you a question about a point or end or something.
Well, hey.
It was safer than.
We just can't get the grant without it, I don't know if anybody voted against two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, we voted against sixteen hundred anyway, I mean, and my question is, if we don't get the three fifty, are we gonna get this, you know what I'm saying?
We've already got it committed, aren't we, we just do our resolution?
What, the three fifty we applied for, we did not get, we only got eighty-five of that three fifty.
No, when did that change? I thought the last time we talked, we said we was done, it was guaranteed, and this was two fifty, and we was gonna put sixty up or something.
No, we applied for three fifty through ADCA, through a CDBG grant, but we were not awarded the full amount, they only awarded eighty-five thousand, so.
So all we had to do to be guaranteed the two fifty from then was pass this?
Well, we, we gotta still do a plan through engineering and, I mean, there was a little more.
This is our next step.
But we have to pass this resolution in order.
To move it up.
To move forward.
And I was gonna put up what we agreed to, six to eighty.
Yeah, that don't.
I'll say that.
That don't change anything. So Dawn and Eugene, Carla, you get that?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah.
All right. All right, discuss rates for the city quirk. Do you have that in here?
Yes. I had given y'all this, that before the end of the year, before the budget was coming was.
And that's, I think that's consistent with the new law.
We'll go into detail with us about it.
Oh, the rates consistent with the law.
Fair Labor Standard Act, now for salary employees, it's, um, six hundred and eighty-four dollars per week, or thirty-five thousand five sixty-eight per year. Basically, that's exempting them from overtime, otherwise, if you go under that, you have.
If you under that, you gotta pay overtime for all of the.
That's right, all, all, all of forty hours, pay time now.
So she make five ninety-two now? And that would be a hundred and forty dollar a week raise?
Be like an eighty. But a ninety dollar raise.
Two dollars an hour basically, two and a quarter.
It's from four fifty-five to six eighty-four, isn't it?
No, from five ninety-two to six eighty-four, her current.
Oh, she's making five ninety-two, but for the law, states from four fifty-five to six four, eighty-four.
That, that's the limit.
Yeah.
They can't make you do that.
No, I mean, they're, they're not making you give a raise, they're just saying if you don't pay that and the employee gets overtime, you, even if they're on salary, you gotta pay them overtime.
Right. That's the minimum to exempt, is what I understand, six eighty-four.
So I guess we need to look and see if we're doing all right in overtime, or whichever route's cheaper, my opinion, I don't know.
Does that mean I get overtime now?
Does that cover all five people?
That's what you.
Well, all of the forty hours. You think all forty hours, now I have to work forty hours, work at my park.
Before the budget was coming was.
Doesn't care.
And no, nobody ever said a word about it until I told Daryl.
We got off mine, didn't we? What about mine? This is an unfunded mandate, too.
Well, it's really not something that you have to do.
Yeah, according to this, you do.
No.
Otherwise, but you have to comply.
You got, you don't have to do it, but you gotta pay overtime for.
Right.
It's the same, she works, and you know, she's working over that, you have to look at it.
Yeah.
Well, you know, Neighbor Day, Fourth of July, meetings, everything else that we do, I don't get any overtime for it, I work for what salary I make, and I also, the insurance has went up again, and I pay a hundred and sixty-seven dollars.
We discussed insurance, yeah, zero deductible, I have fully deductible on my insurance. If I didn't pay zero deductible, my insurance would probably be a thousand two hundred and one, I mean. You, you said you didn't pay the deductible, correct?
No, I don't know what you're talking about, deduct, deduct.
My insurance pays eighty percent, if I go have a surgery, it's a hundred thousand dollars, I'd pay twenty thousand out of my pocket. So you don't pay zero, that's one of your premiums, I, we discussed that. And everybody else has got it.
What the insurance is.
No, it's not, all the insurance is twenty-eight. I've got Blue Cross, Blue Shield Alabama, mine is twenty-eight.
Hers is Blue Cross, Blue Shield, too? They're different plans.
Well, I know, but you said you chose a plan with zero deductible, that's for.
I chose a plan for family coverage, and that's all that's offered here. I didn't choose it, they choo, chose it for me.
Was it zero deductible?
And I pay a hundred and sixty-seven dollars a week to have it. Family coverage, that's way over nearly seven hundred dollars a month.
Are you salary?
I am salary, I was hired in as salary. In a small town, you don't choose your insurance.
I thought, I thought at one time you said you didn't have, you had no deductible.
I never said that.
That's what I couldn't figure out.
Our policy, our plan is chose for us because we're a municipality.
Did we ever look at any other plans, we discussed that too, but we never did.
We never, nobody can give us anything, I mean, this is what most of the municipalities are with.
How much did the insurance go up this time?
Four percent.
So it's one sixty-seven now, it's gonna go up.
They were rationed.
That's what it's went up to now. It's just right at one sixty-seven.
And that's everybody that wants it, wants insurance.
I'm the only one that has the family coverage, because nobody else can afford it. And if I drop it, I won't have any dental, so I'll probably end up having to drop it.
Kevin, help me out with this, because you've done this, right? There's no way we can work her less than ninety-two dollars a week with the hours she's putting in, or not within all our, everything she does with, she carries a lot home with her through the week, and she does the Neighbor Days and and everything that we have coming up. And it's, it'll cost us ninety-two dollars a week more, just to stay on salary, do our, it's.
The difference to get to the.
But if we don't do it, we gotta pay her overtime for everything she works on the forty hours.
You know, it'd be good if you had a record of the time. But we just don't have that.
Why should we, we're writing a check every week, that's the financial document. We might get the spot seat, you don't wanna plug in?
Oh, to make a good call, man. About what do you, how many hours you think you work out a week?
Different, for different weeks, you know, all the meetings that we have, we've had so many that's run till ten o'clock at night, all the grocery store, the days that I'll have to go to, Neighbor Day stuff, the Fourth of July, that's an off day for me, but I work it for nothing. We have.
Well, that's, you know, part of salary, but.
But it is, but.
But if she's getting paid overtime for it, she'd be getting paid overtime, right?
Well, I'd be paying them, I could let her off Friday, four share, forty hours, and then what that pay overtime?
You can't be off Friday, you know, payrolls and stuff like that.
We got manual, we got two of them.
I just don't understand what goes on in my office.
And, and, and I don't, I don't know, to, to know.
And plus the court, I have, I never get a penny extra for court. And it takes a lot of.
Totally.
Seventeen.
I put her at seventeen ten, my three dollar variable patrolman.
Could a patrolman come in and do my job?
Probably.
I don't think so. And I've been asked before for something to compensate me for the court, through the court, but I've never gotten.
Yeah, you should be getting one. I'm all great, you should be going to court, you know, I mean, let's stay on salary and sell stuff, we go. So you're making four fifty-five right now?
No, I make five ninety-two, ninety-two.
And ninety-two, ninety-two.
But if you're salary five ninety-two, you can't pay overtime.
Now, you're, was it fair?
That's barely a standard.
And what makes sense, sir?
Don, we, uh, we had done some good work that we went ahead and implemented, so we didn't have to work out that. For salary employees.
Yeah.
But we thought a couple of years ago, the law was changing, and, uh, so just to kind of get ahead of it, we went ahead and made some adjustments. It's done. Have you figured what the total cost that would be, or to raise that up? To the six eighty-four?
Two eighteen hours, eleven to eleven.
And what you do?
Take a dollar and eighteen cents an hour. Go from five ninety-two to six eighty-four, because breaks down to fourteen eighty-two an hour, seventeen ten, six eighty-four. That's on eighty, eighty, oh, on forty hours now, I've got it at forty. The basically eighty-eight dollars a week difference. It'll be a hundred and fifty to the one.
Well, we got two options, we need to leave it like it is or, or pass it.
Well, no, we don't have to leave it like it is, we can still raise her up, even if we don't go over the six eighty-four.
But if we leave it like it is, she, she gets overtime for all the time she pays, she works all her overtime.
If, you know, I mean, if she gets overtime, she does.
Yeah.
They had her, he can change her out working. Well, maybe not say like going in Friday, she had thirty-eight hours, you could tell her leave at twelve instead of three on Friday. And that washes the overtime out.
I don't, I don't think we could do that to an employee, that's probably against labor law.
And do it down there to stay Alabama.
Um, if you want your work done, you don't wanna cut somebody.
We, we've got to, what's going on in here we've got to get done?
You know, we still shut down on Wednesday all day.
We work.
We're closed to the public.
That's one thing.
The insurance increase for this year, uh, went up like nine dollars for me, nine dollars a week, fifty-four dollars a month, around five hundred and fifty a year.
Do you have an idea of roughly how many hours a week you work?
Um, it depends on what's going on.
You, but you do more Monday, Good Friday, you're, you're off none of those days, didn't you?
Unless I'm sick or I have a doctor's appointment.
You work Monday, Good Friday, and then you have the council meeting you do, and then, uh, court.
What about move, what about moving you up a dollar an hour? That would put you the second highest paid employee on the police chief. That would cover your insurance. Everything I have to that point right there.
Don't ask me, because I'm not.
Maybe a dollar an hour, that'll be. Going from four ninety-two to six thirty-two. A week.
How often you have court, Carla?
Once a month. But then I work on court a lot during the week. I mean, you have to take payments and do whatever when it comes. arises.
Maybe if a dollar eight, that puts you at seventeen.
What?
Maybe if a dollar eight an hour, that puts you at. That would bring you to seventeen. That would be even the police chief.
It'd probably be seventeen an hour?
Well, you're making five ninety-two, ninety-two right now.
If you work forty hours, that goes out to fourteen dollars a week a hour.
If you figure it on a forty hour a week.
It's fourteen.
That comes up to thirty-five, three sixty. That's within two hundred dollars, that you're talking about. Seventeen times forty times fifty-two.
This court system not paying anything.
My motion is to pay overtime and evaluate it in October. So if we don't got the budget done?
That's in the budget. That's what I've tried to tell you.
Your two dollar hour raise then?
That is in the budget. I told you all about it beforehand. Tavi talks about it, y'all talked about it. The budget was, was set for that.
I really don't know what the budget is, to be honest with you. We never did really finalize that other, say we're gonna do this hypothetically, but.
Yes, it was voted out.
Well, if it was budgeted, it should have done been passed then. My motion is going to be to pay overtime.
And what I'm making now?
Can you keep up with it? I mean, I don't know how we don't know, how, I don't know how we're even signing the check to pay anybody if we don't know what hours we're working.
Well, I was hired as salary. You get a salary.
Yeah, but still, you've got to keep up with hours. I'm a salary employee, but they keep up my hours and everybody down there. I'm considered salary. I get paid at twenty-one, twenty-two, anybody in here in the state, you know, will ask, uh, Norfolk, Japan can pull it up. It's called open check register. See the governor's salary and everybody's on there. I'm considered a salary employee. But they steal, I still punch that clock every day. And if I work overtime, I get paid overtime. That's what I've been begging. I don't know how we can pay bills and we ain't got no record of it. I don't, I don't know what to work. I mean, I understand your salary, but there's still got to be a record. I don't know how we got record.
None of the, none of the clerks before me ever have, I guess.
Well, I'm not worried about it. I ain't, I ain't never been elected before. I'm not worried about before. I'm worried about more of it. That's what I keep trying to reiterate. I'm not trying to be smart, undermine nobody, but look, look at the Mayas Bear Creek saying. And they some people, just like some of us that's up here and don't say nothing, but they're just as guilty as the rest of them by association because that's their job. When you get elected, you've got criteria to go by. Now, you can sit back and like go by it when somebody gets drugged down. Everybody's going down that same team.
Oh, I was saying that no one did before me and that's why they didn't make me. Okay?
The, the only thing I've ever questioned. Not review with anybody on salary, how, how do you know if you work overtime or not, if you're not keeping up with the time? Not just you, but anybody that was on salary, how would you know if you had overtime?
I just, I do a lot of things extra and I do a lot of, all those, all the meetings, all of the things that I do extra.
That's just my career.
Y'all know.
Pay the overtime, we're sitting, leaving, manually leaving, all that. Do we keep up with that?
Of course.
Well, you usually come in every day at the same time, you usually leave kind of at the same time, unless you're.
Sometimes it's later, maybe it just depends on when that started that day. Some days I don't take a lunch and some days I do.
You know, just because we've been doing it that way don't mean we have to continue doing it that way. It might, might need to set up something where you can keep up with the hours.
Well, I see when we come in going to Chromeos.
We don't have to keep doing it. You need something to base the figures off of.
Chromeos computer system attracts everything. Put in leave, you approve it to get a record of it, but. We've always kept it on paper, so we'll continue to do that. The old can't track it, but anyway, that's different animal there.
Be good to have that data just for. Any future. Uh, people in these spots and stuff like that.
Well, I don't know what needs to be here, no way. My sales, I mean.
It's not here, I'm, I'm talking about.
Plus, we ain't got a record of it.
I'm talking about getting a record.
That's what I'm saying.
Start some process.
But I mean, if, if it's the way everybody's done it, I mean, what are you trying to add if you don't want to start doing it? That's what I'm getting at. I'm not saying nobody's doing nothing wrong. But if you got a record, that covers everybody's butt.
Well, I hope I haven't done anything wrong.
Well, I'm not saying you have. I'm just talking about cover. You take it.
Listen, I've worked here for six years and I think I deserve something. I work hard and I work long hours and I work every time I'm asked to do something, I do it.
So I know that. I'm not saying you're not a good employee.
I've been under a lot of stress from you guys and, um.
I don't know why, because I ain't been up here pushing. It ain't been for me.
It's just a lot of, lot of.
And I guarantee you, it's not been for me. I've not been up here in your business, ever.
Well, maybe some of you should.
No, because when I do, you want to get shown it, well, I ain't got a record of it. So that might be one of them. You know?
I ain't got a record of what?
Well, just like you said, you don't have a record of the hours you work.
Well, I wasn't.
That, that's part of your job. I'm thinking discussing the race. I'm done. I'm done discussing the race.
Well, yeah. Maybe don't.
Discussing that.
What are you gonna do? I'll just say this, and I shouldn't, I guess, but this council has not worked with me very well. And I'm, I'm trying everybody to please y'all.
I feel the same. That's two ways to go. It goes both ways.
You know what? If you want to come in there and ask me anything and I can pull it up on the computer, I will.
Well, it's like I said when I started about this payroll stuff. I can go back and look, I can show you that was first line, well, we're salary, we can't do that. Yeah, we can do it. Then right there, it sits at what I'll for. We must be trying to hide something. Now, see if we had that, we could all pull that computer up and look at it. And us being over the finances, the council members are over the finances of the town. I know they actually read that article a hundred thousand times. And we're supposed to be able to review them with documents. We passed the laws of the prison when the mayor carries them out, and if we can't see the financial reports, therefore, we don't know what's going on.
We get a copy.
We're going on a wing and a prayer.
Every week, every meeting.
I have somewhere out here where any of the employees' salaries are on here. When we wrote checks, they only get paid every week.
I didn't.
They get it. It's never been on here. There's no overtime, there's no part time on here, we're paying part timers, there's no check, we're paying a regular employee.
If you want to see that, I will. You didn't, I've never.
I brought it up. I brought it up from there. So different times, the part time employees get paid different every week. This salary, this check being wrote or being on the check register.
I don't understand.
That's a county payroll check register.
Employees get paid a different amount.
Certainly. You, you don't ever know what he wears, but I mean, that's not on there. That's, that's for different discussion. But anyway, any check that's wrote, it'll be, we can review it.
If you want to see the.
They pay the employee's salary or whatever.
I'm making a motion. We bumped Carla up to six hundred and thirty dollars a week. And whether it's on the computer or manually, Carla would just keep up with the time.
And I would be paid overtime?
If you work overtime, you don't get threshold.
In that scenario, you would.
You would be paid overtime.
And you make motions, you're supposed to bump the title brackets.
You make this, you make a recommendation, but. I thought we could labor like it was.
I don't like you to make, I don't like you to make motions, no.
Can we not?
But I, I can make a recommendation, but. But that would be what I recommend, but.
But you're going to have to see.
You made a previous motion, so we need to go through that first.
Six thirty didn't pay overtime, that, that's pretty spout, huh?
My motion is pay overtime for all our work.
Insurance says went up every time and the job does, is probably, she's probably paying lowest of many to work in the county.
Bear Creek, because she needs.
Yeah, the main, the main salary is above even the six, um, eighty-four per week. I, I, I was in litigation with the county clerk. And.
They're about four dollars an hour.
She was suing because she wasn't getting, uh, the main salary. And that was, she prevailed on that too.
Yeah, because she didn't pay her overtime, huh?
Do what?
I said, if, if we're paying her salary plus overtime, there's no round four. So it's because she wasn't being paid correct. That's working her salary, working eight hours a week and was paying her below, as much as she says.
Well, it wasn't a, it wasn't a parallel labor standards act case. It was, she was paid under that and she was working a lot of hours in, uh.
But if they'd been paying her overtime, they would have been.
Well, that's, that's true if they'd been paying her overtime, but they weren't.
Yeah.
And the problem. They end up generally working a lot of hours, particularly where they're taking care of the court system and all that.
So if we're doing this for insurance purposes, I said we give everybody everybody's thing, right?
It ain't necessarily that, but I, I know when we hired her in, we were not in a good place financially. And, um. We had talked about when we hired her. That if, if we started doing better financially, that we would raise her up.
She said they roll races, but we've been waiting.
Uh, none that I know of. Have you?
Does it say here, it says, uh, in state, Alabama, most salary workers are exempt from keeping up with their hours because they're not eligible for overtime and it says, however, there's nothing illegal about. Salary workers clocking in and out, so there's nothing.
Well, there's nothing illegal. No, no, there is.
I do it every day. Been doing it. You go out there, don't punch in, you ain't gonna get paid. They tell you, you're salary.
That's the law there in state.
You go get rolled up there, but anyway.
Well, if we're not going to build by this law, having to pay what they asking. In an agreement with all of us, I'm for leaving it like it is and just pay her overtime for the overtime she gets. Still raising her up and then paying overtime. They ain't gonna distinguish the overtime, they're gonna distinguish the overtime.
She, she'll keep up with her overtime.
I do, I just think she ought to be bumped up some. I mean, I do. I, I don't think the salary fits the job.
And it don't. I'll be fair, we gotta work to the county and this, her salary doesn't come up where it needs to be. But now, I'd be willing to check three places of same size towns and pay them her the salary they get. I'd love for that.
How much you say the insurance was going up?
Now, I'm not talking about Bear Creek now. Bear Creek, they, they pay theirs more than anybody.
Well, Hodges.
Yeah, because they were there, that's.
Vina makes nineteen dollars an hour.
Who does?
Vina, and she does some dick work.
Yeah, but Hodges is on Skid Row.
Well, that's what happened before, just let her get checked three towns and list them and what.
I have them in there, I think Vina and, um. Of course, Bear Creek, I don't want to know that, but.
How much do you say the insurance was going up?
The insurance went up nine dollars a week.
I'm gonna make a, I'm gonna propose we give her fifty cent an hour raise and pay her anything over forty hours, time and a half overtime. She keeps up with it and every time we have a meeting, that's on there, what ours is and what we pay her. That's my motion.
All right. We have to deal with these motions at some point.
It's gonna be my motion.
Eugene made a motion.
Yeah, we need to vote on it.
Right.
We'll make a motion, give her fifty cent an hour and anything over forty, pay her time and a half.
Eugene made a motion. Does anybody second that motion?
That's gonna be my motion.
Anybody second that motion?
That's twenty dollars an hour. That'll be twelve dollars, well, twenty dollars a week. That'll be twelve dollars more than insurance going up. But she'll be getting paid overtime for anything over forty. That'll be twenty dollars a week. Insurance will pay it at least a week, one of all the next month.
Nobody seconds. Motion down on the table.
Be fair, we, I don't know what to vote on. Can I ask a question then? So Carla's been in this position for six years.
Six years.
The same sound. Insurance has been doing it, hard to do it every year. And some, we, this council made a, made an agreement that we would, uh, pay her more. If we got in the position to be able to do that.
Not necessarily this council, but when we hired her during the last council, she was hired during a pretty rough time.
Yeah.
Financially. And we did tell her that, you know, want to swing in a little bit or off, we would, would try to bring her up.
Okay, so kind of meet, I'm just kind of thinking, meeting in the middle, so. You know, we, you had another proposal and then, uh, we could put something in place. To see what kind of hours she does have with the workload, just, just keep up with them like they are. Then in another. You know, we may, in another two months, say, hey, we need to do something else because we're paying way more time and a half than we need to. You know what? And that's what we're going on into. You know, and, uh, and then at that time, you could back it up. Could we, you could, you could actually give her a, a different raise at that point if you wanted to, if you saying, hey, I'm, I'm paying five thousand dollars in overtime. We might adjust her salary to take care of that and then be good for us. Still good, still good for her too. But we need something to track by, some metrics.
Yeah, for a playboy.
Do something in between. I cut one up here, there I'll say it. Check. And then come back to it.
Well, that was my suggestion. She didn't want to agree to that because we done put two thousand a month in the budget to give her the raise, so that, well, not to win her right then.
I don't know what to say. You, my opinion don't matter. Never does.
It does.
A dollar?
It was right at a dollar. We live up to six thirty. It's gonna be right at a dollar an hour.
Check.
And then just see how things go because, I mean. She, she deserves a raise and we can raise her up.
Need to do something, sure. Make a motion to vote a dollar. And our raise.
Is that the six thirty?
Yeah.
I'll say it.
All right. Darren make the motion.
Uh, that's with the exception, like Kevin said, when we know the budget has fallen, I want to look at, look at the figures and see if we need to just.
We know we're looking at every meeting.
Yeah, we can live. Yeah, we could look at it in every meeting. That's right.
Well, but I don't care to look at it. I know what I'm gonna start doing. I'm gonna cover my butt. And I don't throw up my ass butt.
But we really need to help her, but we need to make sure we're covered too. Now help future people make better decisions too.
All right. Darren made a motion. To move Carla to $6.30. Is that right?
Right.
All right. Don made a second. With the stipulation she keeps her hours and we look at it.
Yeah.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. All in favor?
No.
Forward or backward?
Motion passes.
All right. Adam number five. I'm scared of you, right?
Discuss adding an additional paid holiday for the town. Goodbye, Barney. He would like to see employees be off of Martin Luther King Jr.
Martin Luther King.
Martin Luther King Jr. Day.
And two things happened to me on this. I was chairman of the commission and I got a call from Montgomery when we was meeting one day and got a good chewing for it. And another thing, I was in the army and we went through Rite training, heavy Rite training. And you could really study Martin Luther King and all he wanted to do was be treated like everybody else. And he wanted his people treated like everybody else. So there's no way you can fall out with him, even though I was in the army and we was preparing for rites and stuff. But he had to... They had the right to be treated just as good as we did. So that's why I'd like to see us take Martin Luther King holiday. And I brought, I had a copy of the counties and the county's got about seventeen holidays where we got...
Exactly six.
They take off everybody in the state.
They do. And I came up here, the Martin Luther King holiday, and we got another president on that same day. But I came up here and you can't communicate with anybody because the state's shut down.
Was it budgeted?
No, I don't think so. I just want us to look at it. We don't have to do it, but I wish we would look at it.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I think we probably ought to look at that. Most all city halls were closed.
They were. They... It's about all of them were closed that day. All the towns and all the counties.
Banks. We couldn't do this. Get another bank.
And I didn't mean to give a speech about it, but that's the way I feel about the Martin Luther King Day.
I mean, he's... He played a huge role in...
The dream told you everything, didn't it?
How many holidays does the town have right now? Do you?
We have ten paid holidays. So whether you want to look at it tabled or you want to make a motion to pass it?
I'd like to see it pass, but if they don't want to, I'm gonna be whatever they want to do. And I could make a motion to do it. If it don't pass, it just don't pass. And that's why I would...
Don makes a motion to... Make Martin Luther King Jr. a paid holiday for the town. I get a second.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
I'm in that for it.
One won't know. Either fact it wasn't budgeted and we can hire an employee eight weeks early, but we can spend money like a girl's own free.
I'm a day.
It's three to two. Motion passes.
For the revenue, they got up to do with Martin Luther King, the financial aspect of it. Look how good I get it myself.
Adam number six, which we added, discuss the IT from the December 18th meeting. We had two bids. One was under a contract. And then we had a bid, work as you go as needed. So I think y'all, everybody looked at the contract we had and... Wayne's already been up here, helped us some. I think it's probably gonna be cheaper work as you go as we get the computers set up.
You don't think there'll be an issue with ethics, do you? I mean, I know at least not.
Not on that.
No, I mean, I'm 100% in agreement with it if it's not.
Yeah, he don't have anything to do with the town.
It does our meetings, but... We go deal on that. That's different now.
Different company, but...
That's on the edge of the line.
So y'all, whichever y'all do.
My motion is hard. If I know, I'm gonna win. Leave him.
Eugene makes the motion. Darren seconds. All in favor?
We'd be crazy not to do that. He's right here close to us.
And knows how to use weather.
All right. Have one grab on grade Morgan Stedham. Any motion?
Yeah.
Eugene?
Second.
Second.
Kevin?
All in favor? Make motion to adjourn.
Yeah.
Eugene? Darren? All in favor?
Get me out of here.